America and to remember what we stand as, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our February 19th Select Board meeting. Hopefully, everybody's used a sign-in sheet so we can keep track of our visitors. Are there any changes to the agenda, additions or deletions?
I have none.
Hearing none, we'll go right to the minutes. Is there a motion to approve our February 5th Select Board meeting minutes?
Make a motion to approve the February 5th, 2025 meeting minutes.
The second? Please, the motion, it tends to second. Any changes, corrections, omissions, errors, anything on the minutes?
I have none. I just had one. Page one, line 41. It's Judy Halberg, H-A-L-L-B-E-R-G. And that's all I had.
Anybody else on anything? All those in favor of approving the minutes with that one correction, please say aye.
Aye.
Citizens comments. If there was someone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time for citizens' comments. Anybody in person or anybody on Zoom? Next item is old business, and it says, "I have no old business."
Except I do now.
Oh, you do now?
At the time of the memo, I didn't, which made me question what I do. But anyways, so a couple things. Housing Commission, as you all know, we received a grant for the feasibility study of the town's 139-acre parcel just south of town. The Housing Commission is working with SE Group on that feasibility study. There will be an open house on March 18th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. upstairs, and it's going to be very interactive. There will be all kinds of boards, storyboards set up, you know, you can vote, give your opinion on different types of things that they're look that the Housing Commission is looking at. So just encouraging everybody to attend. At this point, we're just gauging feedback from the community on even the concept of a housing development down there and throwing out a lot of different ideas and a lot of different options and just kind of getting some interest from the public. Once that open house is complete, we will also send out a survey with the exact same questions. We will make that available on our website and do some promotion and advertising for that as well, trying to gain as much community input as we can. So they are preparing some flyers and some marketing and press releases and advertising for us, so that'll be coming out in the next couple of weeks, but you'll hear this from me for the next couple of minutes.
Snacks and prizes.
And there will be snacks and prizes. Come for food and you might win a couple gift certificates.
There you go.
Who does the Housing Commission study? Who is it?
SE Group.
Oh, okay.
SE Group is the same organization that did the Village Center Master Plan and our Wayfindings Plan several years ago. Yeah, good organization.
Exciting.
The other update is as you, if you've driven down Pleasant Street, you see that our carport that was donated to the town is not serving in such a capacity anymore.
Oh, it is. You just keep driving.
After the storm, as I let the board know via email, under that carport is car three, Cruiser Three, which is now what Tom calls a lowrider, and one of our police officer's personal vehicles. So we are working with the company that built it, the contractor that built it, negotiating all those pieces, so I will keep you updated as that all develops.
Does the town insurance get involved too?
No. Well, they will on the Cruiser. Carports are not covered by insurance, we have since learned. And so, and this is the reason why. That is a lightweight metal structure, not necessarily designed for this area, so we've learned a few things. So, no, we will be handling this with June Carroll and navigating this. So the Cruiser will be covered by insurance, which we will also go back on the company board, but all being worked through. There's no red flags or concerns for me at the moment. Everything is amicable, but we are definitely dotting all i's, crossing all t's, and I'll keep you informed as it develops.
I'm glad no one was hurt. Nothing came down hard on that Cruiser.
Nothing came down very hard on that Cruiser and Lejeune. And yes, yes, we are very lucky that nobody was in any of those vehicles.
They have it on a film?
We do have video, so that, the emergency services building, of course, has cameras at all angles, and so we have it from three different camera views. It's there and then it's not. We have thoughts and concepts about where the failures were, which I'm not going to put in an open meeting at this time, but again, I'll keep you informed. And that's it for me.
Any board members, anything with old business? Moving right along, and I guess we're going to be appointing an assistant zoning administrator?
Yes, so we need to appoint an assistant VA for the town. Statute does allow this. I've given you a copy of the statute that addresses this topic. Does require that we have a policy, which Preston has put together for you. The previous one, I guess, had a typo. He sent me a new version today for you guys to sign. The purpose of this is, number one, Preston has some vacation time and some extended vacation that he will be participating in. This summer, there will be some periods of time where he is away. Hugh Quinn, who is our assistant zoning administrator now, will be filling in that role while he is gone. And this is also for the purpose of transition, as we had talked about. That's why we brought Hugh in and made that a full-time position this past year was in anticipation of these things. So you have with you a copy of the policy that needs to be adopted. Marty, if you guys could sign in, that would be awesome. Thank you. So a copy of the policy for you guys to sign and adopt if you're in agreement, and then we would need a motion to appoint Hugh Quinn as the assistant VA.
So I guess it's pretty straightforward as far as the policy that we have in front of us, so that will give us the authority to make that appointment, and I would entertain a motion to approve this policy as written.
Some move?
Second.
Please, the motion, Ariana's the second. Any further discussion or anything about it before we vote? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
So that first item gave us the authority to appoint an assistant zoning administrator. At this point, I would entertain a motion that we appoint Hugh Quinn as our assistant zoning administrator.
Some move?
Second.
Please, the motion, please, the second. Any further discussion on this? And this basically stays into place until we change it.
Correct. The zoning administrator has a three-year term, but the VA does not.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you, Hugh. Appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is our sewer force main project. Naomi Johnson is here from the DeFrane Group. She's going to give us a presentation on the project and some information, and this is basically information for us as the select board and the town, so they could have any input or questions or concerns regarding this project, so we have an idea of what's happening. Naomi?
Thank you. So if you could share, thank you. So I have a PowerPoint presentation with a few slides to go through tonight to give you the background of the project. As I was introduced, this is regarding a wastewater project. There's an article for this year's town meeting for the amount of $2.9 million and change. We'll talk about that a little bit further. And so if you can start the presentation, we'll get the slides to full screen.
Do you know how to do that, Susan?
If not, we can just scroll through. That's fine, because they're not going to change too much in size. So again, the project is a wastewater project, and I'm going to talk about what is involved in the project and then the need for the project, and then talk about the financing of the project, the implementation phase. So here on this graphic, you'll see the colored lines, and so there are two types of sewer mains that are being replaced, as well as a pump station. The pump station is on First Avenue. You can see there's an arrow pointing to the location. The blue lines are gravity sewer mains, and those lines, we are not replacing all the gravity lines that feed to this pump station. The blue lines are the selected ones that are in poor condition that are being replaced. The line that comes out of the pump station, the discharge main, also called force main, is the green line, and that is being replaced as well. That line currently goes up Depot Street, and the proposed location is on First Avenue. So again, I'm calling it in general First Avenue wastewater project, and if we go to the next slide, I can talk about some more specifics. So the line that's going, proposed to go First Ave is 3,000 feet, and we're also replacing the existing pump station that's on First Ave also, and then the gravity sewer mains a total of 1,700 feet in three different locations. And the reason that we're doing this project is because that existing discharge main from the pump station is aged. It's also essentially clogged. It's a four-inch diameter cast iron pipe that's 50 years old. It has reduced capacity right now, which is affecting the ability of that pump station to work. So the pump station and the force main and the gravity mains are all about the same age, 50 years old. The system was installed in the early 70s, right about 1970. So again, age is a primary reason, but also the pump station is in a flood zone, so it does experience damages during flooding events. So the project will be replacement, but also protection for future flood events. And finally, replacement of those gravity lines is being done because they have cracks in them, they're having inflow infiltration of groundwater and also surface water runoff. So on the next slide, we'll talk about some of the history, and I think, well, we've got the cost, I think this might be a little out of order. And also, Julia, I'm wondering, does she have the most current version?
She should. Is this your next?
I'll see pictures. You added the pictures to that deck, right?
Yeah. You know what? You have it as a PDF, Sue.
It's like she's opened it now.
She's got it as a PDF.
I have. I brought it from the get-go.
I can also just re-mail it to her real quick.
But she could use the PDF yet?
She should.
For some reason. So while she's pulling that up, I can talk a little bit more about the history of the project. It started in 2023. The town completed an asset management plan, and the asset management plan was a study and an inventory of all of the collection system, all the sewer mains and the pump stations, as well as the wastewater treatment facility. That asset management plan then looked at the condition of facilities and the risks to those facilities if something was to happen to them and ranked them as far as what is the highest risk, meaning the highest priority projects to complete. And so we'll talk about that a little further, but of the five highest priority projects, this project will address three of the biggest needs. So yeah, this is the current version. So this table right here is right out of that asset management plan, and so you can see top of the list. It doesn't have the highest risk number, which is in column number two. The First Avenue pump station had a risk of 20. The notes to the side talk about the reasons that contributed to the high risk. The Depot Street force main was the highest priority, and that, again, is because of the reduction in capacity because of the clogged line over time.
So what's the maximum number for the risk? Is that out of 100 or 25?
No, it's more like 30.
Okay.
Yeah. And so then the next three, there's Route 103 sewer main, which the line on Depot Street falls into that category, but there are other components, other lines in town that have high risk that are on Route 103. And sometime last year, I had a presentation to the Select Board where we had a graphic that showed all those lines. The wastewater treatment facility is up there. That'll be a future project, as well as the line that leads to the treatment plant on Legion Drive. So again, as part of the asset management, the entire collection system was televised to identify issues. So again, with this project, we address those, and then the next slide will show you the condition of the interior of the pipe. It's been corroded over time. We've filled it up. Some of that has to do with the velocity of the sewage being pumped through the main. We will increase that velocity with this project, so we have a more resilient pipe. On the next slide, I'm showing one of the devastating issues that has occurred in Chester with flooding, and this photo is right there at the intersection of Depot 103 and First Ave. And to the left is where the pump station is. The pump station is underwater during 100-year flood. So then on the next slide, we'll talk about the costs for the projects that I've described. We've broken into three construction contracts. The first is the force main, highest priority to replace that line, then is the pump station, and then the gravity sewer mains on Depot Street. So I've listed the construction costs here. Those are the first three rows. The total of those is a $2 million cost, $2,180,000. The project is not planned to actually be constructed until 2026, and I'll talk about that later. We'll give you more explanation on that when we talk about funding. In addition to adding in a contingency factor, excuse me, in addition to adding in an inflation factor for the future construction, and that's at 3%, we have a contingency factor. So basically, that means there's something that is encountered during construction that was not planned for, we want to have some budget set aside for that. Then we list the engineering in three different phases. The preliminary was the cost for doing that asset management plan and capital planning, the final design cost, and then the cost for construction, management, and observation. And then finally, we have a line item of $40,000 for legal, fiscal, and administrative costs. So those are all the factors that contribute to the 2.98 to 9 million dollars. And on the next slide, this will basically summarize what I've talked about so far. Again, the benefits of this project will be to provide reliable wastewater collection and pumping facilities to comply with state and federal requirements, and so in this case, the federal requirement is actually protection against a 500-year flood. So the design of the replacement pump station will elevate the entry to the pump station above the 500-year flood potentially. Now, and then the third item is a point here, it's just replacement of deficient lines that are aged, cracked, and have the restrictions for the force main of clogging. On the next slide, I'll talk about the finances of the project and how the 2.9 million is planned to be paid for and repaid. So the first two stages of the project, meaning the planning and the final design, have been paid for by the state program, which is actually receiving federal funds, which is a clean water state revolving fund. They offer a loan for construction costs, which would wrap all of the costs in together. There's a 30-year loan for a term, 2% fee. It's listed as an administrative fee, but essentially it's an interest rate. Now, addition to the offering of a loan, they do provide subsidies. The first two phases, planning and design, were paid for at a 50% ratio, meaning the state does not contribute 50% of the cost. That 50% cost doesn't apply to all of the construction costs. It's limited to $750,000. So between the 50% off for the planning, 50% off for the final design, and 50% off up to $750,000 for construction, what you'd have is an $847,000 subsidy is the term. It's essentially like a grant. What it means of the 2.9 million, they subtract off that dollar amount, so what's repaid is a $2.1 million loan. Now, if you average that over the 30 years and over, to see what the repayment for the town is, and then what does that mean to the average user, that equates to $12.50 a month. So that would be there, an increase that would be necessary to cover the cost of the loan. Now, again, back to construction in 2026 and the finances, the flood, because of the flood situation for the pump station, that is eligible for a grant to hazard mitigation. And so now, as applying for that grant, the results won't be known till probably fall. It is a good candidate for receiving that. So with the grant being received, what's looked at right now for preliminary loan may go down, meaning that grant would be much higher than the $750,000. It could fund the majority of the pump station portion. So, and then in summary on the next slide, just to go through the steps that we've been taken, have been taken to get to here, we did the preliminary engineering, with asset management completed in 23, the final design occurred in 24, and now here we are at 2025, asking the voters to approve this with a bond vote. Construction will be completed in 2026. That would be a one-year construction season, and the funding comes through the Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund and additional grants that may be secured by the town. With an SRF loan, that repayment starts one year after the project is substantially complete, so it would not occur until repayment till late 2027. Any questions regarding the project?
Sounds like you covered it.
Well, we already, so we paid for the redesign, and we paid for the final design.
No, it's not paid. You borrowed. You have to repay those loans.
But they're 50%. We borrowed. We already did. They are already financed. Or you're going to, we're going to finance these.
No, so what happens is when you get one of those loans, they subsidize 50%. The other 50%, we sign the loan docs, but we don't start repayment for, you have five years to start repayment. They do that so that the cost that you've already signed the loan for gets rolled into construction.
Okay, so you're back to that all at once.
But if we don't go to construction ever, in five years, we have to start repaying this. That's how it works. So that loan paperwork that you're signing is your commitment that in five years, you're going to start repayings. That's what that is.
There you go. That force main's going in a different location than the old one. It's going up First Avenue, going towards that neighborhood, and up and around, back up to the top up there. What material do they use on it? Is it a four-inch main also?
Yes. And so it could be either PVC, pressure PVC, or it could be ductile. And it is designed to, the bid documents will allow for either for the contractor to use the pipe. So whatever will be the most economical, but they're equivalent in quality.
So that force main has been a problem for quite a while, and it made quite a few repairs on it. Is there a chance that that could fail and it wouldn't be able to be repaired, or no matter what, we could repair it? Because it seems like it's, it's, it could be.
Some of the factors, you know, if you think about the traffic on Route 103, heavy truck traffic, nonstop, essentially. And so the other location where breaks have occurred are made of rail tracks. I don't recall with the old plans if that line was in a sleeve, but the new crossing of the rail tracks, it is required to be in a sleeve. Both for our gravity line coming through and the force main going back will be in sleeves. So again, you know, it does go back to, you know, you want to have quality construction. You want to make sure that the pipe is properly embedded, and you'll have a person on site full-time watching the contractor. Any ledge will be removed from the center of the pipe.
It's been a project that I know it's been giving the sewer department headaches for many years and stuff. And if it failed completely, what happens? I mean, you end up pumping it out with tankers or?
Right. You'd have to basically have back your trucks come and be pumping it out and hauling it to the plant, so it would be expensive.
It's too much of the old knowledge.
Yeah.
I would add up quick.
And this pump station, I didn't mention, but of all the collection system pump stations, this is the largest. So there's the large pump station break at the end of the collection system going into the wastewater plant, but throughout the system, this is the largest. It's collected from Stone Village, it's Depot, Elle Street, so there's a fair bit flow going there.
They use the term now 500-year flood? I mean, we just always hear 100-year flood. Now it's 500, so the standards are even more stringent? Is it higher up or?
Well, so when the federal money is coming to fund a project, they require that you do flood sweep against the 500-year now.
And is that 500-year designation something that's on the record somewhere? They say this is 100, this is a 500?
Exactly. It is. And so the elevation is known, and so you go from 100 to 500 years, about a one-foot difference. It's not five feet, like you might think that, oh, it's such a great, much greater flood. But you know, it's interesting. I mean, back in, back in the 70s, FEMA, you know, had, did all these flood insurance studies, FIS, this is, and so all of Chester, you know, you could go to any major stream and see what those numbers are, what those elevations are. All the communities in Vermont.
And those are the same numbers from 1970 that we still use?
Yes. And so what happens, you know, I mean, it's a side topic, but if somebody wants to build in a flood plain, they have to go and they may have to get a letter of map revision, letter of map amendment, and they have to prove that whatever they're doing is not going to impact the 100-year flood, no rise analysis, which we had to do for this project because the new facility will be still in the flood plain. We have to prove that you are not raising the elevation of the 100-year, even though we're adding fill by anything, zero rise.
We used to hear about the 100-year floods, oh, you know, now they're coming every couple of years, so the 500-year ones, I don't know.
They're coming soon.
It sure seems like it.
And the federal government's position is for critical facilities, which this is.
How much is that?
Hugh, you have to come up?
Come up here.
Hi, it's Hugh Quinn. I'm just curious, like, how much will that raise the pump station? Like, is it going to be like 20 feet in the air or something like that?
The elevation of the ground compared to where it is now, the elevation of just around, it would basically, now the ground pump station would be four feet. So there will be a drive going, bringing the service vehicles up to the pump station, almost like that.
Mr. Mancuso, do you have a question? Is that your hand up?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, go for it.
Well, I'm just curious, yes. You're addressing infrastructure in Chester, but you know, when you consider that future growth is on the table too, or whatever it is, and like, you're going to spend 3 million however long it takes, can this be possible? Thank you.
Yes, the pump sucks.
So I guess the capacity of that pump station could in?
Could you repeat what you said?
I guess he's talking about the capacity of that pump station for future growth. Is it designed into it? Can it handle more if there was more growth?
Yes, it can. And so we look at the capacity of the pump station really as the volume of the, I'll call it a wet well, holding facility of the waste as it comes in. That's one thing, it has to be sized for, but also then you look at the pumps going out. Now, the pumps, regardless of the flow coming in, which is generated by the users, and that will increase in the future, pump station is going to go at a fixed rate because it needs to get the wastewater through that force main at a certain scour velocity. It's going to come on, always going to go 120 gallons per minute, 120 gallons per minute. But you do have to make sure that the facilities that are receiving the wastewater are large enough for the future. We have a minimum 20-year design life, not design life, but 20-year viewpoint for the future loss.
So the answer is, yeah, it'll handle any future, perceived future growth that we might have in that area.
And a question?
Have another hand up?
Linda Diack.
Linda Diack, is it? You have a question?
Yeah, I do. The Clean Water Fund and the other grants that you mentioned that are possible, and are these federal funds or state funds?
So the.
And are the state funds reliant on federal funds?
So the Clean Water is a state revolving fund, and it does get its money through EPA. And so that is federal money, yes. There are not freezes on the EPA funds.
Today.
For this purpose.
Okay, well, my concern is, I mean, obviously, this is something the town needs to do. That's not an issue, but the voters really understand that although. But the voters really understand that, although Julie is a Liz and getting grants, and she's always done a phenomenal job, and that, you know, that's something that she should absolutely be proud of, but she's up against a set of situations that she's never been, we've never had to deal with before. She's done with given funding, and then whether it's gonna be available or not. My concern is just that the voters understand that there may not be any cost savings funding.
So I can talk a little bit more about the revolving fund. So the name of it explains the, how this, how their program works, the state revolving funds. So the money originally comes from EPA, but then as the money is lent out to communities who repay the money, that goes into a revolving fund. So if there are periods of time where the flow of federal money does not come, the state has a very large part of their revolving funds that are not subject to the same restrictions as the straight EPA money does. The priority projects can receive those revolving funds that come in from the repayment.
Which we are.
And priority. And every year, communities submit a priority list application to the state. This project has been on the list and been in the fundable range for the last few years, meaning it is considered high priority because of its purpose and need.
And we did get our letter of approval from the state for this project. The next hurdle is we have to supply them with a positive bond vote. What would be at risk, Linda, would be hazard mitigation funds, because those are grants that are not approved yet. So, and those are FEMA funds. Hazard mitigation funds are FEMA funds. So what's gonna happen with that grant program? I don't know. But financing the project through Clean Water will not be a risk. Other grant funds coming to it to lower the price could be a risk. But this is why we seek approval for the full project amount. Anything that we get taken off is bonus money. But the seven, the 847 is, is, we know that that's coming.
Sure, we know the cost, we know our funds, we know where our money's coming from. It's pretty secure. But that benefit of having that amount lowered with the FEMA thing, with the federal government, is the one that could possibly be influenced or negated because of uncertainty that's going on in the government right now.
I don't know that the state has, and I don't know that they haven't. I don't know that the state has received its actual hazard mitigation funds for those grant awards. They could, I don't know the answer to that. They may already have, because the amount of hazard mitigation funds that a state has to grant out is dependent upon natural disasters in your state. Our natural disaster was in July of '23. So the state may already have those funds, I just don't know.
So how hard is it, because the First Avenue, basically sewer main stops, forgets the river, with one little jog off on the other side? Is it worthwhile, when you're digging this up, to put a manhole on the other side of the railroad tracks on First Avenue?
I guess I'm not quite sure with you.
Okay, so right now, the, the gravity sewer goes from behind what was, it does cross the tracks, but it does cross the tracks, where First Avenue crosses the tracks that goes around behind it. Is it worthwhile to extend the gravity main, while you're doing this and putting a sewer manhole on the other side of the railroad track? Because that hole, that hole, First Avenue's side of the hill doesn't have sewer.
I guess I'd have to look at the, I'd have to sit down with you and go over the question.
Okay.
Yeah. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah. I thought I had.
You have a microphone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bring your chair up.
I thought I had a manhole on the track side.
Yep.
Peter was actually, had been there. I have a drawing that says there's a manhole on that side. There's many times, if I luck, we would not have been able to locate it. And it goes behind that building, which almost grew up here now, it used to be an old snow cats building there. There's now Mitchells, furniture, factor. There's, there's supposed to be one in there, but there's unfortunately, there's roads there, there's just so much metal in the gravel practice locating it. And we've put cameras up there and everything else. We've found infiltration, a lot of infiltration in the spring coming in there, but can't find a manhole over there. So whether, you know, it probably would be good to have a manhole on that side, because there's three sewer services that come in on that end, so you could add up more. Going up First Avenue, I don't know how we're gonna get them.
Just, just get across the tracks. While you're doing this right now, just get the manhole on the other side.
Well, these two ladies here have heard me say it 100 times, and my biggest concern is the four-inch force main, and how close to failure it is. I've done everything, I've repaired it a bunch of times, one time it's out here, it's nine and a half feet deep. If it fails in First Street, and it works as a model three, and it's that deep, we're gonna be shutting the road down for whatever time it takes, and there's gonna be no guarantee of repair. I know it's a four-inch cast iron, unlined pipe, it's 53 years old, and of course, it builds up, iron deposits, particles, or whatever you wanna call them in there. So it's reduced our flow by at least half in there, and there's no way to, we can't even, we get a push camera down, a two-inch push camera down from the upper end a little bit to see what we got, but it's, it's not good. And then we had, of course, we always have a grease problem that comes into the pump station, and I've been using a lot of degreaser to get in that line to try to keep any more buildup being in there, so I've got more volume. Right now, you know, I'm just concerned about spring flows because I got rebuilt pump and a brand-new pump down there, and it's been running good since June. But when the flows get up there, I don't know where I'm gonna be at. But if, if it fails, it's, it's gonna be very expensive. So, you know, that's why I've been pushing so hard for at least this part of the tunnel, because it's gonna be a big problem.
So listening to Jeff and hearing that construction doesn't start until the 26th, 2026, what's the timeline look like?
The project right now could go out too bit this year. However, with the, with the potential receipt of grant funds, the town may make a decision to defer that and allow the grant applications to be submitted. Right now, the request is to, to go forward with the funding, the rest of the $2.9 million that would cover a project to start this year to go to construction. The plans are ready, and that could happen, but maybe it's ready for pursuing additional grant funds.
And I'm just waiting to hear if they, if they are gonna end up awarding the hazard mitigation grant, if they're not gonna end up awarding it, if they're gonna, you know, cut it. I'm just waiting to hear. So at some point after, you know, if we get approval, which hopefully we will, hopefully we can convey to the voters the critical nature of this project, at, at that point, we can then make a decision, do we take an opportunity and wait? The hazard mitigation grant funds that we've applied for is 100% funding. So it's not like it's, you know, $100,000, it's potentially the entire pump station. So you're talking real money. Those are real dollars to our people. So it's, it's, do you wait, do you not? Well, in the meantime, we have a force main that, so we, we're gonna have to weigh that out if we get bond approval. And I'm hoping, maybe, we'll have some answers. Or at least be able to make a more thoughtful decision in weighing the risk of.
But, but going back to the, to the state revolving funds, the SRF, one of the requirements is to receive the funds if you must have a successful bond vote. I mentioned the priority list that are required every year to get on the list. They have a list of milestones that must be completed. And if you don't complete the milestones, finish your final design plans, get authority to, through a bond vote, they, they will bypass you eventually, because you're not ready to proceed. And so there are, are some of the other communities who are asking for the money. They will say, okay, this town isn't quite ready, so you'll, you'll watch something, give it like to somebody else who's trying.
Are we considered ready shy of the vote on? Much more? Yes, yes.
Shove a vote.
We've met all of our criteria, and this is our next hurdle.
No, I'm ready.
Jeff was ready two years ago. I think, I think when I met you, Jeff, the first thing you said was, First Avenue. Jeff is fed ready.
I spent a good many nights up there, going back and forth, but these stack pumps and everything else, because it just was so overwhelming to push that in.
Well, interesting projects like this, when we vote, when, when the citizens of Chester vote, everybody votes, but the cost is borne by the water and sewer users. So sometimes that does influence the vote to a positive side, because most people, well, you know, they're, they're requesting it, the water sewer commissioners, which we are, know it's a necessity, you know it's a necessity, it's something that has to happen. So it's, you know, it's pretty good that it's gonna pass, it seems like, most of the time with projects like this that are presented.
I just think it's gonna, I know it's a lot of money, but it's gonna save us a lot of money if we don't, you know. There are issues that we've got to address, you know. Otherwise, it will cost more.
Thank you, Jeff.
Any other questions or concerns from anyone? Well, Naomi, thank you for the presentation.
Thanks, Naomi.
Appreciate the information. We'll go from one bond vote to another bond vote. This one is a presentation that we're gonna have regarding our solar field purchase. When the solar field was originally put up about eight, nine years ago, I believe, there was options in the contract that gave the town an option to purchase it at the seven-year mark, the 14-year mark, I believe, and then at the end, I think that was it, there wasn't anything at the end. But the town has decided to pursue the purchase of it, consider, hopefully that the financials work for it. I think it would be a great asset to have for the town in the long run about with the solar field. And I guess, Mr. Roper, you've been working on a presentation here, you've been working hard to help with the presentation about the finances and the solar array and how it all works and stuff? And you wanna take?
Take it away?
Take it away, Tim.
Sure.
So there's some basic slides here, just to give an overview, and then we've got a detailed,
much more detailed Excel sheet that breaks down the costs. So I'd like to just go through the slides to begin with. The system is actually, will be 10 years old this summer. This picture here I found on the current owner's website. So they were highlighting, and then the picture was, if you can't see it, it was taken July 29th of 2015, and the system was commissioned in August of 2015. So, next slide. Chester entered into a contract to host the array in 2014, and also as an off-taker at that time. The current owner is a company called GLC Chester Community Solar, which is an LLC that really is a subsidiary of a company called Greenbacker, which is mostly a financing company that owns multiple solar arrays like this one in Vermont and other New England states as well. So I said it came online in August of 2015. So there are three off-takers. I know some people don't like that term off-taker, but that's the term in solar, people who are actually getting credits from this solar system as it produces power. And that's called a power purchase agreement in solar parlance. So it's Town of Chester, I'm not sure which, how many bills, we have multiple meters, and they get applied to whatever meters were set up at that time. Town of Pittsburgh is also an off-taker, and St. John'sberry Academy. And that accounts for all of the credits that are applied from this array to our GMP electric bills. All three of those off-takers currently pay GLC Community Solar at a lower rate than the, the credits that they receive, if that makes sense. So, in other words, we, we're paying less for the credits to, to GLC than what we receive on our electric bills, if that makes sense.
It's a discount on the cost.
It's a discount, yes. They take a fee off the top, will be another way to look at it. Next, please. So the system itself is 495 kilowatts of AC power, but it's 750 kilowatts of DC power. And one of the things, when Lee and I first looked at this together, we said, wow, that thing's cracking. How can it be a 500-kilowatt? That's why, it's got a lot more panels than it does inverters, that's the difference between the AC and the DC. It's what's called a behind-the-meter grid-connected system, so all the power that comes out of there is metered by GMP. This past calendar year, the system produced 778,833 kilowatt-hours, and we know that because it's got a commercial-grade monitoring system on it, that we can access, anybody can actually access that with a link, it's just a webpage that shows that. Next, please, Susan. So why, why should the town buy this? We're currently paying, we're getting a 10% savings, basically, on the credits right now. If we buy the system, we get all of that credited to us. We will also, as the owner, receive the payments, the monthly payments, from the other two off-takers. So, next, Sue. So the idea is that those credits that come off of our electric bill, combined with the payments from the other off-takers, should generate enough money to cover the bond payment. So that's where a lot of the work went into on this, is really looking at those numbers carefully and projecting the model to make sure that we feel comfortable about that. That's a key fact, obviously. So if, if the system pays, makes its own payments, to me, it's, I don't really like the term no-brainer, but it's kind of a no-brainer.
Well, and, and on year 10, it becomes cash positive.
That's right. After year 10, that's right. So if, so if it's positive cash flow starting year one, after 10 years, then it starts generating real money for the town. Next, please. So the, the bond article on the ballot is for a $1.14 million bond, and that's the projected purchase price right now, with some contingencies built in, kind of like Naomi laid out, just, just in case kind of things that we may not actually incur. The bond payments at 3.5% interest would be $135,000 a year. The projected revenue from the solar after our expenses, it's $136,000 a year. So there's your, that's year one, so that's your positive cash flow. Once year 11 rolls around and the bond's repaid, it generates $142,000 a year for the town. Solar Systems, this one is no exception, it's got a 25-year warranty on the panels, and it looks like it has a 25-year warranty on the inverters as well. It was one of the contingencies we've built in, was potentially having to replace the inverters. It doesn't look like we'll have to do that. Next, please. So what are the downsides? The system's already there, the, the land is being utilized to harvest sunlight for electricity, but we do lose, right now, we collect rent from GLC Community Solar of $6,000 a year, so that's $90,000 we'll lose over the, of revenue that we'll lose over the next 15 years. And they're also paying us property tax, because they own that system, and it's assessed, and they pay the town about $6,000 a year in property tax right now. With a 6% escalator built in, which is, we've seen the last two years, our rates have gone up 6%, that works out to be $141,000 over the next 15 years. And what that essentially does, it doesn't change the cash flow numbers, but it does change our ROI on the system, our return on investment, to a mere 10.25%. So Julie, this is what Julie's big in, feed into this deck was, good deal.
Still a good deal. It's not a ROI of 10%, it's a good deal.
It's a really good deal. Next, please. So the summary, the, the bond not to exceed 1.14 million. Positive cash flow from solar production covers the annual bond payments. Positive cash flow from solar production covers the annual bond payments. Years 11 through 15 will provide the town with cash revenue of over $140,000 a year, and the return on our borrowed investments, so we're not actually taking anything out of our pockets here, we're borrowing it, is 10.25%. So I think that's the last slide, does anybody have questions?
Actually, I just wanted to make.
Oh, there's one more?
Yeah, there you go. A comment, and that is that the system will not just shut down after 15 years, it'll keep operating, so there may be some additional work that needs to be done, but it should keep producing power past the 15-year life expectancy.
Indeed.
And then all of these, all of this and the financials are based on a 3.5% interest rate. So I've spoken with the bond bank, the bond bank has, their traditional bond pooled programs, pooled loan programs is typically what we take advantage of. Those interest rates are right around 3.27 to 3.23, 3.27, in that range. But the bond program has an energy efficiency program that they stood up, I think, two years ago. Using some of their money, they got legislative approval to start this new program. This lending program, it does look like this project would qualify for that, and that has an interest rate of 2.125%, which would be amazing. So that would, that would just makes this whole scenario even better, as far as the financing.
Right, but it's interesting, it doesn't change the cash flow, but it does change the ROI.
Correct.
Because it costs us less to borrow the money.
Correct.
Another factor that's not in here, I don't know, Sue, do you have a, it probably wouldn't help to show the spreadsheet on the screen, nobody'd be able to see it.
Can you try to show the spreadsheet, Susan? Let's just see, it may not.
I don't know if you'd be able to zoom in enough to see it, but again, I built in, I can't say it's the worst case, because we don't know what's gonna happen with interest rates, we don't know exactly when this deal will close. But 3.5% certainly seems like a safe number to use, given the returns that Julie's gotten from the bond bank. The other factor here is there's a thing called renewable energy certificates, I don't know if anybody knows that term or not, but they, renewable energy has a value, and there's a market where you can sell what's called renewable energy certificates. We asked Greenbacker for their information on what they're getting paid now for those recs. This is, this is what's known as a legacy solar system, it's, because of its age, it actually has saleable recs that can be sold, renewable energy, renewable energy certificates, short recs. So I was on the phone this week with some of my coworkers at Sun Common, who worked on the commercial side more than I, was more on the residential side, and confirmed that there is a market for these recs today, ranging between $2 and $3 per megawatt hour, which is 2 to 3 cents per kilowatt hour. So if we plug that in, then it really changes the cash flow numbers to our benefit. Again, I've got zero in there because we don't, you know, we don't have, we haven't had any conversations with anybody about it, but it looks like that would be another factor that would be in our favor.
Sue pulled up the spreadsheet, if you wanted to zoom in on something specific, Tim, she could.
Tim, those renewable credits, how does that work? Somebody buys them? Because I just, I don't understand that.
It's, yeah, it's a little bit abstract, to try to get your head around it. So ours would be sold to off-takers in Massachusetts, because the state of Massachusetts created what's called an energy carve-out, where folks need to, some, they're typically are companies that need to show that they're doing something to support the renewable energy market.
Is this like carving credit?
No, no.
Okay, all right, I've heard of those.
Well, maybe the concept is the same.
The concept is the same.
Yeah, the concept is the same. So that's where we would potentially have customers who are looking, there are, one thing I found online is there's a table where folks are actually looking for, we need this number of recs to buy. And so if we can match up, somebody who needed $800,000 a year, that would be our ideal customer, or we could split them among different customers.
And it doesn't affect anything that happens as far as the return of investment, the payments, or anything like that, it just gives them a certificate that says, we're supporting renewable energy?
Basically.
And saying, okay, so that's part of our portfolio, and the state law requires it, so.
Wow.
And they give us a bunch of money.
Did you talk to Greenbacker, so you know they haven't sold them?
Well, we've emailed, I haven't gotten.
You can only sell them when they're produced.
Right.
So we assume that they have a contract, we'd like to see that contract. And, you know, some of the, some of the few remaining unanswered questions are, what happens when the system gets transferred to the Town of Chester, assuming that we do buy it? What happens to those existing contracts? Also, the contracts with the other two off-takers. Presumably, they would not, it's a good deal for them, you wouldn't think they'd want to cancel it. If they did, I think we probably could use all the power here ourselves, and would give us even more savings.
That's what I'd like to get to, yes.
If there was a way to make that happen, it would be advantageous for the town for sure, to use all the, all the power that's produced there and anything, if there was by chance any extra school system or whoever else that's still local in the community, that would be able to use that.
And again, because this is a legacy system, we would still be able to do that. Under the proposed rules, a community solar or shared power, you will not be able to build a new system unless it's adjacent to the off-taker to be able to do that.
That was new, that was new in legislature last year, remember we were telling you to meeting them?
Yeah, I think Arnie was on that call too.
I think you were on Derek's or Susan's question.
Mr. Serso, you have a question, is that your hand up?
It is my hand, thank you for taking my question. So some year, hopefully many, many years from now, the system will eventually need to decommission. Have we thought about a decommissioning process, what they might be, and if we're ready for them?
Well, you know, Lee addressed this a little bit, the warranties are 25 years, so we're pretty safe in assuming the system's gonna work well beyond that time. I would, personally, I would think that if the panels started failing and the inverters started failing, the rest of the infrastructure would still be there, and we would probably just put new panels and new inverters up and keep the thing running. The CPG is, doesn't have an expiration date on.
Certificate of Public Good.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Certificate of Public Good, which is what allows us to operate that system, you know.
Do we even know, do we know yet what the cost is to recycle a panel? Is that known yet? Has that even happened?
We talked about this a little bit in another meeting, there are facilities, there are companies who are recycling solar panels now. Because there's not a, there's not really a scale for it, most of them are still working.
Right, that's, that's my question, I think this came up before, was do we even know what that number was?
So projection, you know, crystal ball, at some point, there are gonna be a lot of solar panels that are gonna be coming down, and all the materials there are recyclable, they're aluminum, copper, silver, silicon, and glass, and a little bit of plastic.
So, Arnie, the reason I asked the question is, we have approached this a little bit at the solid waste district level, and due to the rapid construction of all these things, there are going to be an awful lot of panels suddenly on the market for decommissioning at the same time, and we're uncertain of what this really means to us as well.
Yeah, that's probably a question that's gonna be coming up a lot more often. But I would hope, once the 10-year payback to those, or to the panels are done and the bonds pass, even putting aside some of that money that's, that it's being generated for that purpose in the future, just in case. 10% or whatever to put aside into a fund, we don't know what it's gonna be, but at least we'll have some kind of a cushion in case in the future if it's gonna involve some spending money to recycle them or do whatever has to happen with them. But the fact that there's nothing toxic in them, that's a plus. I mean, there's so many things in this world today that you have nothing to do with, that's hard to recycle, hard to do anything with. But in this case, it seems like it would be not extremely hard to do, but someone will come up with something.
I mean, they're valuable materials, so assuming that doesn't change, then if there's money to be made by recycling them, there are gonna be people who want to recycle.
I'd like the idea of having a plan for decommissioning of a potential fund, nothing we'll ever need, but we should be prepared.
Absolutely, I agree.
Yeah, note to the future select board. Allocate the profit after year 10 to accrual for the.
20? Arnie will still be right there.
No, but it's a very good point.
The, Robert?
I wanted to quickly express my support for this project. I think it makes sense on so many levels, especially the economic level. I learned something really interesting in the last week, that there are 114 homes in Chester that are solar-powered and are net metering to Green Mountain Power. So how's that relevant? I think there's a growing mindset that solar makes sense, on, again, on many levels. Economically, having an impact on, on what we do with the planet and all of that. So I think this dovetails really well with this growing sense that solar makes sense for people of Chester, because people are pursuing it themselves as well. So again, I just want to support this, and I really appreciate the work that the select board's been doing. We're really lucky to have in-house subject matter experts with Lee and with Tim. So I, I think that the community can feel comfortable that decision-making and the recommendations coming from the board are well-informed. So again, enthusiastic support, and I hope the community will support it as well.
Thanks, Robert.
That brings up another point, Robert, I appreciate the comment, and that is that if the substation gets upgraded by GMP, we can add more solar, which means we could have a community solar for our neighbors here, because it is grandfathered in. We could potentially sell the extra credits, not just to the town meters, but also the homes in, within our community.
We do have the space there.
We do have the space there.
You just have to upgrade the substation.
Mr. Henshaw, would you like to make a comment? Is that your hand up?
Yeah, we were looking at the capacity of these, you produce, is the 500, roughly 500,000 watts, is that a bottleneck for the substation? Or is there something that could be done to improve the capture rate of AC used here?
Well, no, that was a regulatory thing that, to be behind the meter, to have a metered system like that, it had to be under 500 kilowatts AC. And so the designers wanted to maximize the power output from that system, so they added more panels to make, and the system, the output is phenomenal on that system. The numbers worked out for them, and now that passes on to us if we end up purchasing the system. So the short answer is no, we could not upgrade that on the, on the certificate of public good that we have in place.
So being able to add to the solar bill to get more power out, is that on the table or is that off the table, it's gonna go under at 510?
You have to amend the CPG.
Sorry, I do, I do.
Yeah, no, we.
You'd have to amend the certificate of public good.
Well, you could, you could potentially add more panels and keep the same AC rating, but I don't think there would be a, the cost equation would be beneficial for us to do that.
I'm a little lost with that, it's 750 DC and it's 500 AC?
Actually, 495.2.
Even though you could have more DC, you're still always gonna have that 500 AC, no matter what?
That's right.
And the only reason is because that way on the cloudier days or whatever, you got a higher, a better potential of getting to that 500.
That's exactly.
So you've got overcapacity to get to that 500.
So it adds efficiency to the system and maximizes the potential out of those inverters, that's exactly right.
I mean, it'll also give it a low-hunger runway, where you're thinking, oh, solar bills are getting less efficient in time.
Oh, right, as, as the panels degrade, which they do, and that's built into that sheet, by the way, we have a half percent per year degradation built in. So yes, that would help with that, you're right.
So if this project goes through, are we gonna get a town person appointed to go and broom off those solar panels that have been covered in snow for about a week?
We had this conversation.
So it's interesting, there is a new product out that I came across when I was researching this, that helps the panels shed, designed just for ground mount solar like that. And it basically covers the seams between the panels, because that's where it gets caught and slows it down. The problem with that is, it sheds and then it piles up in front of the array, so I don't know how, I don't know if it, it's something I want to look into further to see if it makes sense. You know, maybe we have somebody with a snow blower on a lawn tractor that goes through, I don't know how you get the snow out from in front of them, but. And the thing is that it's, we don't, you're not gonna make that much power in the winter anyway, and all that kind of gets factored in, it certainly is factored into the spreadsheet that I worked on, because that's from actual production.
It's, it's been an unusual winter, for sure, because I've been noticing a lot of panels all over the place, covered, covered big time, but, you know.
My, my system cranked today, though, it shed sometime yesterday. And it's running.
Any other questions, concerns? So as this goes before the vote, I have one other question. One of the loss of income was the rent for the land, right? The other one was, there's a tax, a property tax on the equipment?
Yes.
Is that, oh, it's on the equipment?
It's assessed, yeah.
Okay, because they don't own the land, they're renting the land.
It's the equipment.
It's on the, on the equipment. Does it matter that the, the land is actually a water company, correct? Is that the one?
The land is the water company, correct.
So that doesn't make any difference as far as ownership goes, or revenue sharing, or anything like that?
No, we need to discuss that, that's a point, we need to think about that, let me think about that one.
I mean, it, I agree with everybody that said it's, it's definitely worth it, and it's a positive thing to do, in more ways than one, never mind just the financial part of it and stuff. But as far as, you know, the future goes, as far as solar goes, as far as renewable energy goes, and as far as keeping our costs down. Because after that 10-year mark, it really starts making a difference, and it's interesting that all your estimates and your numbers are on the conservative side, and a lot of them are, hopefully, will be more positive and higher up than we think.
It certainly looks like they will be.
Is there a cap from Green Mountain at 24, I mean, I thought there was a 22 or 24 cent per something?
So interestingly, I actually missed this at the beginning, when I first started working, and I came to Julie with a little, feeling a little chagrin, that Green Mountain Power provided a 4.3%, what's called a solar adder. Because the solar power benefits them through just the way they buy electricity. And it, because I'd never worked on a 10-year-old system projection before, it completely escaped me that that expires after 10 years. So that 4.3 cents goes away, I still showed it in the sheet, so you can see that it's there, so we're gonna go from 24.3 cents a kilowatt hour to about 20 cents a kilowatt hour. That, and this sheet is built just on the 20, 19.888, whatever that worked out to be.
But there was no cap in the contract with Green Mountain, besides that?
With Green Mountain, no, there are, there are caps built in with the off-takers. And also a floor built in with the off-takers, so it can't go below a certain amount, it can't, they won't pay above a certain amount.
Yeah, I remember the floor, and everybody was saying, yeah, the price of electricity is gonna go down in the next 10 years.
Yeah, right.
A good thing they put the floor in.
That hasn't happened for some reason.
Yeah.
I just got a few comments. I, back when they were talking about putting this array in, I was all for it, and there was a lot of people that wasn't. You get the land, when I use it, when it benefited us, and I can tell you that for the last 10 years, signing off on bills, I don't know how it works, but I'll always leave some of the town properties benefited from cheaper electricity. And when I signed the bill for, say, like the well, it could be $4,500, and sometimes it's $2,000, and there's some months where it's zero. And same with, same with the wastewater plant too. And, what was it, 10 years ago, you put 40 panels on one of my buildings a week, and I haven't ever gotten a good. It's been a while, it's been a long time. Yeah, it's been a while, it's been a long time.
That's a good-looking array too.
Yeah. And, yeah, I mean, most people only know I have it because it's on the roof of my old chicken house. And it's nice to sign, basically my electric bills are administrative fees and it's like $60 a month when it could be $500 a month for the three, well, I have two apartments in my house on there, so. Over 10 years, I've saved a lot of money and there's been little maintenance to it. I, I definitely think solar for the environment and for economics is, is a good way to go for, and for the town to be in on it, I think it's a good way to go. Anything we can do to keep our taxes down like that, you've got to be diverse in how you operate it so.
Thank you, Jeff.
The return on investment is definitely there for sure.
Well, it is and, you know, just a reminder that we also received the grant, the municipal energy renewable program grant, 500,000 bucks. And that grant is doing, is doing the fuel switching in a lot of the municipal buildings that is putting them to heat pump systems. So when we can get to a point of where we're generating that power ourselves, now we are actually generating the fuel that heats our buildings.
Right.
Yeah, that was all a step towards that. Thank you, Tim.
Yeah, thank you, Tim, for all those.
I'd like to thank you, Tim, for all the work you've done with this and all the people you've contacted and all the information here. And I think that hopefully the townspeople will pass this bond.
I hope so. I mean, it seems like it makes perfect sense in every way to me.
And I think after that happens, we would get some people involved that are specialties, specialists in this area with negotiations.
So then the attorney.
With the contracts and all the fine work and all the detail that goes into a contract like this, because when you're spending 1. something million dollars, though I appreciate all the help we have here on this board and with our community, we are going to get some people involved that do this for a living, that are specialists in this area to make sure that we're not missing anything and nothing is actually.
And I should add, there is a cell built into that sheet covering legal.
All right. Any other comments, concerns, questions before we move on? Hopefully the sun will be shining for a long time and melt the snow off the panels. The next thing on our item is our annual financial plan and certificate of compliance for our highway department. Good night, guys.
Good night. Good to see you.
See you, Hugh. This is just some yearly bookkeeping that the state requires that, I guess it's to say that we have a minimum that we spend on our roads.
So we get state aid funding. Good night, guys.
Good night, guys.
We receive state aid funding every year, that's a revenue into the highway department. So what we have to show to the state of Vermont is that what we are expending in highway exceeds the amount of the state aid funding that. So that, this is just an annual form that we have to fill out and then attached to that is a certificate of compliance stating that our town and road specs still, road and bridge specs still comply with state which we do.
Julie, you need motions on both these?
I need motions on both of them and then you'll sign them.
So we need a motion to approve our annual financial plan for our town highways?
Some move.
Second.
Leads the motion, Ariana's the second. Any further discussion on that?
I just had one question. Am I not reading the cells in the left column, right, or are they formatted incorrectly? I don't understand why it's 2.5 dollars per mile? Is that just a formatting thing or it should be 2.5 miles?
Yeah, it's, it's just 2.5.
Okay.
They send it pre-populated and I can't delete that out, they have it there, I don't know why.
Somebody, somebody just messed up. That's what I thought.
It's in their PDF form.
They selected too many cells and went dollars.
Yeah, yeah. Anything else? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
The next item, I would entertain a motion to approve our certificate of compliance for the town roads and bridges standards and network inventory dated April 20th. Oh, wait, that's an old page too.
Nope, that's the date that our big road and bridge standards were adopted.
Okay. Some move. Leads the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Ariana's the second. Any other questions or concerns on this? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Did you sign that before we voted?
No. Of course not.
Wasn't expecting any backlash on that. I'll wait next time. And our next item is our no suits or appeals pending. It's from our listeners that states there's no legal action being taken against the town, I believe that's what it means, Julie?
Yep.
Regarding assessments.
This is a form that follows grievance every year.
Is there a motion required?
Yes, please.
Motion to accept the declaration of no suits or appeal in pending?
Second.
Ariana's a motion, leads the second. Any discussion on it? I don't think I've ever heard anybody suing the town or anything over all the years that's always been negative.
We had one. We had one a long time ago.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next item is future agenda items, new business.
So I put in your memo that your next meeting, of course, will be after voting. So you'll have your reorganization, you'll have your short-term rental update, your quarry discussion, so we'll have the planning commission here for both of those, those topics. And then you want to start discussion regarding the class four road policy. So I slated that for March 5th and then March 19th, you have your appointments, paper of record, and then the lady regarding the town forest management plan would be here. Those are kind of what's on the horizon.
Can we put on March 19th executive session for review?
For March 19th?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we need to do it on the 5th? The 5th looks pretty dense.
Are you talking about my review?
Yes, for us to talk about your review.
Um, no, it's like.
19th?
Do you guys, do you want to try and do, I mean, the 5th looks like it's going to be a pretty extensive meeting.
It's, it's up to you. It's up to you. My contract runs on March 5th, but.
Then it will be the 5th.
No, I have no problem. It would take, needing to take longer, it's fine.
The 5th sounds, the 5th sounds good.
Absolutely fine.
Go for the 5th?
It's up to you.
Perfect.
Anybody have anything else that they would like to see on future agendas?
At some point, we're going to have to talk about Jeffrey Byrne, but we'll see if that makes it through the winter.
Build a cardboard over.
Maybe it'll fall.
Too soon.
Too soon.
You're thinking it's a cardboard.
I'm still punchy on the cardboard thing.
Sorry.
Too soon.
It's not better than the cardboard, come on.
We talked about doing a facility, you know, a sort of a, I'm exhausted, a review of all our facilities, an inventory of all our facilities, all the buildings and all that stuff.
As an answer, Frank, yeah.
Okay. So talking about the Jeffrey Byrne.
We revisit that about every four or five years.
Yeah, we do need to.
It sounds like we need to look at it.
We have to do something.
Well, we just keep ignoring it.
It's not really an answer.
Pending the election, pending the election, we'll see who's on board.
You have a question for Mr. Henshaw again?
Mr. Henshaw, you have your hand up again?
Yeah, I'm just really nerding out the spreadsheet you guys flashed earlier for the solo.
Yep.
I didn't realize about this, but I'm really curious about some of the revenue projections that we have in, where you have, it's a big gap in the current, it looks like they're paying 17 cents per kilowatt hour and 15 cents per kilowatt hour respectively. I was wondering, could I squeeze in there and get some of that?
Don't blame me for asking, but.
Phase two.
I can help you out.
Phase two.
Yeah, we got a solar installer here that you may want to talk to offline.
Will keep me in mind, Carl.
Are those great negotiations, or are they due to be a little more?
But that's all in a contract.
That's in the contract between those two off takers and the current owner.
Thanks, Carl. Next item is executive session for negotiations with landowner regarding the Thompson Road relocation. Require, are you heading now?
Yeah.
You're recusing yourself?
No, no, I'm going to have to recuse myself before the official recusing comes in so I don't have to fill out the form and send you a letter at the end of the period to that to be abridged with the minutes along with the one that I did previously.
Did that go into effect already?
Yes.
Good night, Robert.
Thank you.
Good night.
But he's following up on a previously stated before we had a policy conflict of interest.
So we're supposed to do this in two motions. One is to say that public knowledge of our discussions would be a disadvantage in our negotiations. So I would entertain a motion to state that public knowledge of these negotiations would be, put us at a disadvantage in our negotiations regarding this property and what's happening.
Still moved.
Tim's motion leads the second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye. Did we say including Julie?
Oh, including Julie Hans, thank you.
We haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah, that's the next one. Well, now we're going into.
Now we're going into.
Now I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for negotiating regarding the Thompson Road relocation to include Julie Hans with us.
Moved to go into executive session for discussion of the negotiation of the property, including Julie Hans.
Second.
Ariana's the motion leads the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Let me just give Frank my phone number.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
We're in executive session.
Yes.
Okay, I'll shut everything down.
There you go. Call me tomorrow.